We're attending the Penn State School Board's Informational Committee meeting for Monday, May 1st, 2017. We will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh Bruce is coming in.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
That's not it. Does it end so easy?
Just before we start the meeting, I just want to remind everyone that we are videotaped and it's usually brought out on Facebook Live. The recording's actually done remote. It used to be done in the room, but now with our renovation project down, the kids are at another location, so everything is being videotaped. Your viewing pleasure is later. So, thank you.
All right, we'll start the evening off with the special reports. IU number seven. We will get next week, Career Tech, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. We met on April 19th, and the following was discussed. Thirty-six students from our Career Tech are now in the state final competition at Hershey's. Two of our mechanical students are in New York City. It's over now, I don't know how they finished up. For the Nationals, which was great. We also discussed the budget and the $7.6 million budget. And PT was initially supposed to be $100,000. That's been whittled down now because I think we're in the $60,000 category. But we have an increase of eight students at Career Tech, which is a blessing. One of the things that came up is that Frazier, a school district in Fayette County, not one of the nine chartered school districts, make up central Career Tech. And they've been with us, every time they come, they sign a five-year contract. And they renew. Well, they have 18 months left on their contract. And now, again, expenses, they're doing some shopping. And they're checking out with the Mon Valley Career Tech and the Fayette County Career Tech. Now, one, we have 23 programs, our Career Tech. Mon Valley has 13 and Fayette has 12. So, we offer many, much, many more. And they will let us know this time next year what they plan on doing. And they do bring, our programs have been very successful. They do bring 55 students to us out of our approximate thousands to an enrollment. And we hate to lose them. The one thing one of the schools do offer is the gas well drilling, the horizontal drilling, which is going over, you know, pretty popular even though the industry is going down right now. They're in a down cycle, but I know it's going to come back. I think everybody knows it's going to come back. But it's, the enrollment has been very steady from Frazier and really don't want to lose them because then we are thinking also about discussing an enrollment policy for cutting staff. And it's not easy cutting staff there because if you cut staff, you know, you can't cut half of a plumbing teacher, for example. You know, expect someone to teach her to come just for half a day into plumbing. That's just not, you know, it's not like here you have a social studies department, English department, you know, you can compact these things together, but you just cannot do that. It's just, it's very awkward. Okay, but that's, and our next meeting is going to be May the 17th. And graduation is very important, I'm glad I didn't forget this. Graduation is May the 16th. So, it's, other than that, we are going to create an enrollment policy. And Norwin is really, and Hemfield, you've read in the papers how their budget situation is. And Mike Quonman says, Mr. Lego and Joan, Dr. Harris, and Mr. Inglies, you know, you go to me and you listen to those board members talk, you think they're ready to drop off the end of the earth where they're talking. Norwin's laid off 21 aides already, and Hemfield is also cutting. And those two are the two biggest school districts we have in our county. But their, things are, even if they're half right, what there's $3.3 million for Norwin alone is, that got a lot of discussion. That's why we're going to create an enrollment policy because try to keep everybody satisfied because all those districts have an enrollment policy. And Norwin's thinking about furloughing teachers because they want to enforce their enrollment policy. Okay, so I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Prior to tonight's meeting, we had a executive session where we discussed personnel and real estate issues. We also received information on suicide awareness, Pittsburgh Business Times ratings, and electronic device policy. Right now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Harris.
Okay, we're going to start with our favorite part of the month, the Students of the Month. And we're going to start with an elementary winner from Sunrise and I'm going to call Mrs. Corners to present it.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Hunter, would you come on up?
Cute tie, that's nice.
Sunrise Elementary would like to congratulate the Elementary Student of the Month for May, Mr. Hunter Muir. Hunter is the 11-year-old fifth grade son of Patrick and Wendy Muir. When speaking with Hunter, he told me his favorite subject is math. He said it is the easiest for him because he feels that he understands what he is learning. His favorite part of school is his friends that he has made. Right now, Hunter is interested in becoming an electrical engineer. He learned in library media that electrical engineers require a love of science and math, and Hunter likes both of these subjects. Hunter also told me that he likes to play outside and is involved in Boy Scouts. He also mentioned that he loves to read. His favorite book is The Blood of Olympus from the Heroes of Olympus series by Rick Riordan. Hunter's mom stated that Hunter enjoys games, reading, and camping. He is a member of youth group at church and active with Boy Scout Troop 201. He is a quiet, thoughtful, and smart young man. "I am proud of Hunter's excitement about learning and his love for school," she said. Here's some comments from some of his teachers. Mrs. Hock is sitting over here, and she mentioned that she has had the pleasure of working with Hunter over the past two years and has watched him grow both academically and socially. Hunter takes his role as a student very seriously and is always striving to do his best and learn the most that he can every day at school. As an avid reader, Hunter is often reading for leisure when he has some downtime. As a teacher, it is enjoyable to watch him be so invested in literature. He often smiles, chuckles, and gasps in amazement when he is reading. Last year, I introduced a particular novel to Hunter, which he enjoyed tremendously, so much so that he helped his mother lead a book club for adults using that particular book. Throughout the course of the year, Hunter has branched out and become more socially involved with his peers. I wish all the best for Hunter as he continues on in his education. Mr. Pompeo Leo mentioned Hunter is driven and ambitious. Hunter is always willing to accept a challenge and has a strong desire for success and achievement. It has been a pleasure to work with Hunter this year because of his positive attitude and love for reading. And Mrs. Chesky had a comment. She wanted to say that Hunter has outstanding citizenship, exemplary manners, a strong work ethic, and is a supportive classmate and role model. It is an honor to have Hunter at Sunrise. We wish him all the best at Trafford Middle School and his future. It's my absolute pleasure to recognize Hunter Muir as the Sunrise Elementary May Student of the Month.
What else is happening at Sunrise?
Oh, yes, I do have, there's lots happening at Sunrise.
Especially this month?
Yes, I would like to state that actually this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation for all the hard work and dedication of all PT teachers and staff that make this district such a great place to live and work. Sunrise is finishing up plans for a building-wide career fair to be held on May 19th. We have around 60 volunteers coming to speak to our students in 15-minute rotations throughout the day. We are really excited for this new endeavor. Sunrise has also organized a running club led by Mr. Spooty, and we had almost 70 students sign up. They will be participating in the Plum Race on May 13th. The district-wide elementary band concert is on May 23rd at 7:00 in the High School Performing Arts Center. Kindergarten readiness testing for our incoming kindergarten students for the district is on May 15th and 16th. The Sunrise 3rd Grade Wax Museum, which is a regular feature at our building, will be on Wednesday, May 10th at 6:30. And May 12th, there's a district-wide Discovery Career Fair for all 5th graders across the district. They're traveling to the Bishop Conair Center in Greensburg and spending the day learning about various careers. This trip is organized by the Westmoreland County Federal Credit Union, and we are very grateful for the credit union's support. So, we are amazingly busy this time of the year.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. And that was impressive with the running club.
Yes.
Because I don't know, we had 70 last year when we used to do the other way.
I don't know how, I can't remember exactly how many we had when we had all the buildings participate, but because that didn't happen this year, they decided to go ahead and have one just at our building. We thought maybe 30 kids would sign up. Well, we're kind of using a lot of volunteers now.
Yeah, I think it's great, great promotion of fitness.
Dr. Harris, could we mention something about Sunrise is ranked pretty high as a school in the area?
It was, it was ranked number four in the whole entire state.
I'm sorry, you say that again?
It was number four.
Out of how many?
Out of 1,005 or four? How many?
Something, over 1,500.
Over 1,500. Very impressive. All right, next for the Students' Month, Mr. Simpson.
Hey, Dr. Harris. Paige, you want to come on up? I'd like to introduce Paige Westbrook. She is the Penn Middle School Student of the Month for May. She's a 7th grader at Penn Middle School. She's the daughter of Christina and Gary Westbrook. She's been a Penn Trafford student since kindergarten, has enjoyed all of her teachers and fellow students along the way. She's a smile, as you can see, that lights up the room, no matter what her day's like. That smile's always there. Paige is a very determined young lady with everything she does at school and at home. Even outside of school, she's constantly seeking out new information and finding new things to learn about. Paige is a high-oner student and works diligently every day preparing herself for high school and eventually college. Hard work and high academic achievement are her only passions. At a very young age, she showed exceptional athletic ability and coordination. She could have done very well at many sports, but she was always interested in dance. She's constantly moving and dancing throughout her home and at several dance studios in the area. She is a special gift with musicality and dance, and hopes to one day earn a scholarship for entertainment and dance and then a career in this area. Paige is a very special young lady and is always looking to be a positive light to others through her actions at home, school, and on the dance floor. Speaking to two of her best friends, Maya Simpson and Mara Suman, Maya even came tonight to show her support, which is nice, they say Paige is a very hard worker and dedicated to her work. She's also a great friend and truly deserves to be Student of the Month. She's so helpful and generous to others. She's so very generous and always cheerful. And when they are down, they can always count on her to pick them up. Her teachers say she's a fantastic student. Not only does she excel in her schoolwork, but she is the most polite and pleasant student they have. She's a great personality and a sense of humor, and I often hear her complimenting others. I cannot say enough positive things about Paige. I'm so happy she's representing our Penn Middle School as a Student of the Month. She always has a positive, very enthusiastic attitude, no matter what the task is at hand. You can always expect a smile as she runs around the gym, more in health classroom. She is a positive role model for all the younger students also. Her work ethic is outstanding. Assignments always in on time, polite, respectful, helpful to other classmates. She is an exceptional choice for Student of the Month. I think with Paige, you know, the thing, when I see her, I think about, you know, it's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. And that's something that Paige lives by, so I'm very, very proud of her. So, congratulations, Paige.
And the Students' Month for May 2017.
Is that Maya Simpson, is there a relation?
I wish I could claim her, but no.
No. All right, Mr. Simpson, what's happening at Penn Middle?
Tomorrow and Wednesday, we have our 8th grade PSSA science testing. And then Thursday is our annual 8th grade trip to Gettysburg. I want to thank the board, Mr. Lego, and the entire administrative staff. It's an expensive trip to go all the way out to Gettysburg, but the 8th graders, they study Revolution, Reconstruction, and this past month, they've been, you know, all about the Civil War, so we go to the turning point of the Civil War, the most important part of the Civil War, and it's only three hours away. So, thank you, that is an excellent trip for the kids. We're going to celebrate teacher appreciation next week because we've got so many outside trips this week. This Friday, we have a teacher professional development with, we're going to focus on creativity in lessons, Google applications, and specifically planning for the 1718 school year. Next weekend, weekend of the 12th, is our Drama Club's presentation of Aladdin. If any board members would like tickets, I can get them on me. The Thursday, the 18th, is our band concert. We have a STEM showcase on May 24th, which will, there'll be other schools coming to see our STEM program during the day, but then the evening, Mr. Steele, Mr. Keimer have, will open the program to the community so they can see. A lot of folks, when you say STEM, they don't know what that means, so people can come and see the incredible things we're doing there. And then we have other, numerous other events to end the year, the 5K, the Spelling Bee, the Noble, and then the dance. So, there's always in May, there's a lot going on. So, thank you.
I always say brace yourself as soon as May comes because it's an exciting month.
Yeah, lots going on.
And finally, our Student of the Month winner from the high school, Ms. Amy Cook.
Okay, our Student of the Month to high school is Amy Cook. Amy is a senior at Penn Trafford, and I was going to write, I was going to write a whole bunch of things about what I knew about her, but I have too much to say about what your teachers said about you, so I'm going to go right to that. I wanted to, I also, I sent you a survey about some things to say to people coming up, some kids coming up into the high school, and what her advice was, was to take classes that interest you as well as challenge you. Get involved in activities that help develop your leadership, communication, and team-building skills. School always comes first. Take part in college summer programs. They supplement your education and can become some of your best memories, which is something I thought like a 30-year-old would have written, but that's what Amy has to say. Your English teacher says, "To stir the pot, to put something together, to grab the ingredients and make something completely different than what you started with." This can be an interpretation of the word "cook." Amy Cook has done just this with her senior project. She has taken a single thought, added her ideas and her desires, and made it possible for different schools to collaborate with found and learned knowledge in forensics. Amy met this challenge, helped write a grant for the cost of the event. Amy was making history here. Amy also takes on other challenges whenever it is band, a senior speech, Smash Brothers, or a forensic mystery. She takes it on with a mix of attitude and conviction. Amy knows how to multitask and does it with a talent. It makes all who are lucky enough to know her and have her in class experience this as she becomes even more dedicated to her studies. Amy Cook may be moving to Duquesne University, but she will always have a warrior's ability to conquer. How about that? And then from your music teacher. Amy Cook is and has been a strong representative of the PT Choral Department. Her work ethic, discipline, passion, and leadership are indicative of high standards of excellence as she holds for herself and the students around her. It's been my pleasure being able to work with Amy in many different educational environments. She is a young woman who will step over the threshold into adulthood and be successful in whatever she chooses to do. And this last one is from your mother. Because her mother can't be here, so she's watching right now. Hello, Audrey? Your mom says, "Give me a minute to brag about my daughter." Accepted to honors colleges for all four schools that she applied to. Duquesne's where she's going. She applied to Penn State, WVU, and Towson also. She was invited to apply to and awarded one of Duquesne's Bayer School Scholarship, Scholars Program scholarships, which included four years tuition paid and summer, paid summer internship in her field, which is forensic science and law. She was awarded the Kennan Medal Corporate National Merit Scholarship, awarded the Dorothy and Richard Barr Westmoreland County High School Scholarships Fund Award through the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County and Pittsburgh Foundation. Will be awarded some scholarships on May 11th at our scholarship award night. She's in the top 20 of her class with a 4.4649 grade point average. In marching band, she's been trumpet section leader, brass captain, and this year assistant drum major. In chorus, she has been, had some, several nice solos, your mother says, also for much of the last year and this year. Sang in a trio for the school in the front lobby on most Friday mornings. In drama, she painted sets, worked on props, assistant stage manager for several shows, co-stage manager for the Spring Musical this year, and has helped stage manage for various other events. That in itself, like just reading all those things, I can't believe you have the time to do all of this because your mother said at the end, "Some more individual things were sprinkled in there," and she makes our heads spin. We know another event is coming when she says, "Oh, by the way." So, our Student of the Month, who is very deserving, is Amy Cook.
And I'm really grateful that you had your mom send it in to us. I know she's watching now, but your mom has been one of my best volunteers as far as I can remember, and she's always been very supportive of me, so I'm, you're very lucky. And I know she's happy to have you, but you're also very lucky to have your mom because she's always been very helpful to me, so I appreciate it. So, what's going on at the high school?
Oh, what's going on at the high school? This, no. We're very busy this month with the prom coming up this Friday. So, last Friday, we had the Prom Promise activities that we had back, back here and actually inside the school. Very interesting simulated events to help kids realize that they shouldn't drink and drink and drive. So, I actually tried some of them out, it was very, very interesting. And then obviously, the prom would be on Friday. Everyone's preparing for that and the grand march and all those kinds of things. Our end-of-year senior projects are happening right now, actually, over in the auditorium. There's some of those presentations. They go from, they range from Amy's forensics to a grief group to a pet parade in the back next weekend. There's going to be a dog parade if anyone wants to come and see it. So, the senior projects, I don't know if you all realize the things that these kids do up here. They are amazing. And the fundraising and the philanthropy type things that we do here are amazing, and it's not what everybody gets to hear all the time. For example, one of the, we had a speaker come in for someone's senior project, and he had a story that everybody kind of felt bad for him. The guy was imprisoned for, he was wrongly imprisoned, and came in and talked about it. Our kids raised money for him.
Wow.
So, I'm getting a little emotional here, but we have a lot of great things happening up here.
Thank you so much. That's great. And like a couple of them mentioned, it is the prom on Friday, and the teacher in service at school is on a session. All right, we're now going to take a photo with all the Students of the Month, the press, so that the students can come over here.
Congratulations on May 8th, Sunrise Elementary.
Next, we have Mr. Trent Soames, our Student Union Representative. Taking a photo, take a photo, go ahead. You missed your opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. The only thing that I have for today, unfortunately, our community movie night, hold on, I'm getting my notes up here. Unfortunately, our community movie night was canceled or postponed because of the weather. It'll be May the 13th, and we still plan on having the two movies, the festivities, and, you know, the baskets. That's three days before graduation, so it'll be a nice last activity of the year, and we hope to have a good turnout.
And now, that's chorus night, and that's about 1,000 people at the high school. And I saw that, so how are you prepared for that?
You know what? I don't know if that conflict was brought up. I will talk to the student union about it. That's a, it's a good thing to know.
It's, I mean, I know as far as parking, most of the people who come for the chorus concert will be able to be parked up above, but that's a huge, huge crowd for that.
Yeah, I'll make sure to bring that up to the student union.
Okay.
All right, is there, do you have any questions for me? All right, great.
Was this your last meeting?
I, no, I will be here next, next week for the military thing.
Oh, that's right.
But that's, I think that's it. We had elections, but there were some open positions that still need filled, so I was planning on just having the next person present, but that's one of the positions that we're still taking a look at, so we'll.
I thought you were kind of coming back from college to do it.
Uh, we, we will have someone for you to, to fill this job, though.
Dr. Harris, I want to compliment Trent, too. Uh, his, uh, senior project, he did an excellent job. Are you going to tell them what they, what you did?
Uh, yeah, I just, we had a, on my night was on the societal issues night, we had some great, um, some great things. We had people present on fake news, we had people present on human trafficking, um, animal issues, uh, and I presented on the issues that third parties face when it comes to ballot access. And, uh, it was a lot of, just it was, it was a good time. Everyone did a really great job. I, I learned new stuff, so it was really cool. All right, thanks.
Thanks for all the June. Appreciate it.
I actually am going to go head to my sister's lacrosse game.
One by one, everyone leaves. All right, um, that's all I have for information. Recognition of visitors. We do not actually have anyone who signed up tonight to speak. So next week, under athletics and extracurricular, we're going to ask you to accept a resignation. Under budget and finance, we're going to ask you to approve expenditures for the high school renovation project for the month of May according to the schedule. Approve the CWCTC budget for 2017, 2018. Um, our budget did increase because of our enrollment increase, so we're up to 78 students, which is, um, it's great to have so many students at the Career Tech Center. We pushed it, we did a lot from our middle school, pushed even to go up to there, so it's nice to see the enrollment is increasing. Um, we're going to ask you to elect a treasurer for 2017, 2018. Approve a termination of the, I hope I can say this correct, refutable trust. Tentative approval of the district budget for 2017, 2018 school year. Our business manager and our assistant business manager next week will do a budget presentation during the school board meeting. We won't have anything under buildings, grounds, and safety. Under employee relations, negotiations, transportation, we're asking you to award the contract for the district transportation. We would not have anything under food service. Under personnel and curriculum, approve substitute teachers and support personnel authorization to issue reasonable insurance of employment notices. Accept retirement resignation. Approve intern assignments. Approve leave requests and employee summer help. Under our policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, accept and file Information Committee meeting minutes on April 3rd, 2017. Approve graduation lists for the class of 2017. It's hard to believe the graduation is the end of this month, so it comes quick. Final approval of the revised board policy. Tentative approval of the new and revised policies and administrative regulations. Approve the Chapter 339 Plan, which we talked about for probably a year now, it all deals with our workforce, internships, and development, careers, pathways. And we won't have anything under taxes, insurance, and census. And I bring it back to you, Mr. Katsasik, for...
All right, there being nothing else this evening, there are most of our German. Reading a German.